So. Alright, the uh.
Yes.
What do you get in terms of this month's your last time?
Fair. And. It'll be very little way back here.
I know, I can do better.
Does it report?
I did.
That's alright.
It always takes me like two or three times.
Now it saved the pack.
Nope, mine's done that too.
Every time I do it a couple of times.
Now I got it saved so I just.
Actually, I did too.
Well, the same is like, yeah, it saved it this time, like, I just didn't.
Okay.
Just all there, watching my clock on my computer. Five fifty-nine, it's gonna go anything second now. He's not, oh, baseball.
Okay, six P M., this is the May twentieth, uh, school board meeting. Um, we'll call roll call, John?
Here.
Brad?
Here.
Jason?
Here.
Myself, Keith, and Ben is not here this evening. Alright, that takes us to announcements. Alright, no announcements, okay, our next meeting will be June seventeenth of twenty twenty-four. Will be our next scheduled regular school board meeting. Okay, and that takes us into oath of office. Brad?
Okay.
Step on up.
Do you have a form?
I don't have it with me, I don't have talked to them about that, so I'll send a message.
Got it.
When is our, uh, when are their meetings? Is it the whole, that's coming later?
It's coming later, that will be the third of June.
So, while we're waiting for the oath of office, we'll move on to approval of agendas. Alright, so, do I have a motion to approve, approve this evening's, uh, agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Brad?
Second.
And John, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay. We have the approval of last April twenty seconds meeting.
I'll make motion, second.
Okay, Brad and Jason, all those in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes, and takes us on to treasures report.
Alright, beginning balance is five hundred twenty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-three cents. Total deposits were one hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-six cents. Total expenditures were four hundred thousand nineteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. And checkbook balance is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and, or sorry, three hundred and ninety-two and ninety cents. Local go- local government pool balance is two million seven hundred and fifty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars and nine cents.
Alright, thank you, Brad. Okay. And that brings us to expenditures.
I'll make the motion to approve expenditures.
Um.
I have a question on expenditures.
So we've paid, um, unemployment insurance.
Yes.
For someone who voluntarily left.
Yes.
Why is that?
Because we're still required to, because he worked, went and worked another job, but he's not there anymore. But even though they voluntarily left us, we're still required to pay their unemployment if they.
We're not able to contest it?
I have not seen that we could contest that in the past.
Okay, I think we can, I don't know, but if someone voluntarily leaves.
I, I know, that was what I had thought in the past, when I had contested that in the past. And that was not, I mean, that's been a few years, but. And they have, they know that, that he left employment with us, it's in their records, and that. There's no longer a job opening for him either.
Yeah. Wow. Well, I think in the future, if we hit that again, we need to probably contest those, if someone leaves voluntarily.
I, like I said, I, I have contested those in the past and.
I can ask that question.
I can, I can, yeah, go ahead.
I can follow up on that.
Nor- normally, and this is coming from a person I know who is a business owner, who has had people leave, get fired. They said, if you go to contest it, ninety-eight percent of the ti- ninety-eight percent time, the state's gonna rule and say they get their unemployment. He said it usually has to be like gross negligence, like the person started beating up on people, or tearing apart your business, or did vandalism, or stole. He said if they walk out and say quit, or you fire them, they're ninety-eight percent of the time, state's gonna say they can have their unemployment. So that's why they, this person I know just said, I just quit contesting, just thought, it's not worth my time, energy, and effort, so.
Well, that might be right for a private business, but for a school district that relies on taxes.
Tax dollars, yes.
Things, I think, I don't know where the ninety-eight percent come, that sounds incredibly high.
Yeah, it is incredibly high, but.
It must have changed, because I remember not being able to get unemployment for that.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, I, I, just, just point being, like, we need to make sure that it occurs.
Okay, I, I will, I will contact them and, and follow up again, but, yeah.
Second, I make the motion.
Okay, any other further discussion on this? Alright, all in favor of approval of expenditures?
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
The other thing is, we may be on the amount of time that we could dispute.
Probably not. Motion, okay, motion passes. Alright, back to oath of office. Who ministers that be?
I just had, I would just have Brad read it.
Yep. There you go. Probably be easier than.
Alright, you do gotta raise your hand. Which, uh, okay. By the undersigned who have been elected to the office of the school board member have not yet entered upon duties thereof swear or affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Thank you, Brad. Welcome to another three years.
Three years, or two, two years and eleven months.
Alright, that brings us on to student council. No one here tonight from student council. Committee as a whole.
Um, just a, uh, I think you had the, um, minutes from our committee as a whole meeting. And we've got a few different things that we're going to be talking about on the agenda here.
Alright, athletic director. Mister Holden.
Alright, so we've had a busy spring, spring, um, with our sports, uh, track. Boys got third in the conference championships last week, uh, girls got sixth. We did have, uh, individuals, that's listed there, that won individual conference titles, uh, for track, so quite a few, um, three individuals, and then a relay team. Uh, they're at, uh, the regional meet today, and then the top three qualifiers in each. All those events will go on to sectionals, which will be Thursday at Camden. Um, softball, they won their fourth straight, uh, conference title, um, with undefeated record. Um, they had a pitcher, Louis Borse, throw a no-hitter, um, a couple weeks ago, and then they had a number one seed for playoffs. Uh, and we find out today that Prentice has forfeited their game for tomorrow night. I don't have any more details, other than that Prentice has forfeited, so our girls will not be playing tomorrow night. They will in fact play, uh, Thursday night, but that'll still be a game that we will host, so more information to come on, on that one, so. Uh, and baseball, we finished up our conference season on Saturday, we won, um, two to nothing, and we won our fourth straight conference championship on, on that night as well, so, um, we had both baseball and softball win a conference title, and several individual conference titles for our track runners. Um, Abe Alberg had a couple of things, uh, he passed the one hundred hit and one hundred run, um, milestones this season. He set the school record for strikeouts in a game with twenty, um, out of twenty-one outs. He was also selected to be, um, a W B C A All-Star, um, so he's in the state All-Star game with fifteen other members from the west district. Um, and, uh, he's gonna be the first kid from Solent Springs to ever represent our school in that game, so that's a great accomplishment. Uh, I am also going to be coaching that team, so that was, will be nice for me too, so. Um, we approve golf, uh, Nolan did golf three of four events this spring, so it was good that he was able to get that through. Um, the big thing I wanna focus on here is low, lower level officials fees, so something that, um, we've been kinda low on. That we haven't really had any movement on those fees since I started as athletic director twelve years ago. So I think it's, we're well overdue on needing to, uh, up those fees for our, uh, lower level officials. So that would be middle school for, um, basketball, um, and then, um, also J V for basketball. So, um, my, uh, proposal is to do middle school basketball at seventy-five, so that would be for two games. That they would get seventy-five for two games, and then J V basketball would get seventy for one game. So that is a substantial increase, but again, it hasn't moved in over a decade, so, whereas the varsity officials, when I started, started at fifty-five dollars, and now they're up at over a hundred, I think, for, or just at a hundred for boys' ba- for boys and girls basketball.
And that's set by the conference?
The conference sets the varsity.
The J V is by school.
Yes, and when I first started, the, the J V, um, and I believe even the middle school was set by the conference, and then the conference kinda got out of that and said, you guys pay what you need to, and, um, we just haven't increased our fees, whereas most of our neighboring schools are at those numbers, and so it makes it a little bit problematic to try to find officials when we're paying almost half what other schools are doing for the same.
Is that, is the J V and middle school comparable to what the rest of the conference is doing?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think everywhere is in that seventy-dollar range.
Okay.
You know, for those levels.
And then just out of curiosity, why the five-dollar difference between middle school and J V?
Um, 'cause J V is one game, and middle school would be two games, so you're doing two games for seventy-five, and, you know, one game at a seventy-dollar rate for, you know, the next level up, because you're going from middle school to a, a high school J V.
Yep.
And I didn't add, um, volleyball, middle school volleyball on at this time, um, mainly because I wanna get these contracts out for the fall in middle school basketball, and start to get the J V basketball set. But it's probably something that we should look at, what we do for middle school volleyball, just in the future as well, so. And then, uh, the other piece is, um, coaches, um, a number of coaches have expressed their interest in continuing their jobs, um, for the next school year. Um, so those are listed, lo- all of those, um, had positive, um, evaluations, and, um, they submitted information to me that they wanted to continue in their position, so there are no new hires, every one of those, um, those coaches were in that position last year, and so those are just currently, uh, fall and winter coaches, uh, with spring coaches not finishing their season yet. We have not gone through that evaluation process yet, um, and we do still have some winter coaches that have not gotten back to me. So that's why my action item for next month would be approve any other coaches that need to be approved, and then we'll start posting for those positions in, starting in the fall.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I was gonna say, we have an assistant middle school basketball coach, but not a head coach.
Correct, and, um.
That might be one of the ones.
That said, I will get back to you, um, you know, I, at this point, I don't foresee it as an issue, but at the same time, I, I, I didn't wanna rush things too much for her, and she said I have every intention of coming back, but I just wanna, you know, check off a couple of things, so.
Yeah.
Alright?
Alright, thanks, David.
Thank you.
Alright, that brings us principals report.
Alright, we'll start with charter, that works for you, Brittany? Updates?
Um, the charter board met last Monday, um, and is proposing to move their board meetings to the same evening as the regular board meeting here. Um, so still starting at five o'clock, but making it so that anybody who attends the charter meeting, it's easier for them to come to this meeting as well. Um, there was also a discussion about Montessori teachers and paraprofessionals, and how, um, we can support continuing education for those, those teachers if they, they're hired beyond the grant cycle, so now Montessori teachers and paraprofessionals are not, the training that they get to become certified in teaching Montessori is not supported by the grant anymore, because we're past the five-year cycle of the Montessori grant. Um, so, the, the board would like to recommend that the, and the end, I know we went back and forth, so we, if I get this wrong, please let me know. But the recommendation is, um, that, very similar to how credits are reimbursed for seventy-five percent upon completion, that we would do the same thing for teachers or paraprofessionals who are going through that Montessori certification, the same certification that all of the Montessori teachers right now have. Um. And I think that's, that's it, right? Okay, that's the recommendation.
Right, okay. And I know that's, uh, figure on as far as, okay, so.
Um, beyond that, Eagles Academy just had their last project showcase of the year, thank you to those of you who are able to come, I know it's a really busy time of year. Um, the kids did a wonderful job, and now we're moving on to the evaluation phase, the assessment phase, where the students are submitting completion of their project, evidence of their learning, looking at their project reviews that they got from the community who attended project showcase, um, and we'll be sitting down with the advisors to go through evaluation and evaluation of the standards that they met through that project. Um, those are kind of our, our big pieces.
Thank you.
It was, it was a great job on Thursday night, I was really impressed with, uh, students and their presentations, and, uh, just, their, their full development. Do that presentation and learning, and explaining themselves, so, it was great, so.
Come a long way, I was holding my breath until that evening, and then somehow it comes together, wonderful.
It was all good.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Uh, Virtual is wrapping up their semester, I believe they finished, um, the sixteenth or something. Um, so, 'cause their grades have to be in before the end of our school year, so, finished up another semester of them, and Montessori, they, they were, uh, fifth graders were at Wolf Ridge along with Legacy School last week, which is always a favorite trip. And I think barely a graduation goes by that one of the seniors don't mention that in their speeches. So, um, in addition, right now, positions that, uh, we're working on, I know, um, Mister Hapke's gonna give an update, uh, but kinda coming up is gonna be for that children's house teacher. Um, and once again, we already talked about this, is coming up also the, that Brittany mentioned, the training for the Montessori staff that are, for onboarding. Uh, some other events that I just wanna make sure that I say aloud is graduation this Saturday at eleven A M. in the gym, and I have you're coming, and I know Ben is, and, and is anyone else? Want to be on stage?
I can't guarantee it, because I gotta, I'm on call.
Well, we, we'll have you if you can make it.
I'm gonna be.
So all three of you up there?
Actually, no, I won't be there.
Okay.
I'll be in the city.
Are you, no?
No, I'm gonna be going.
I'll make sure I have chairs for you guys, appreciate that.
That's, that's good to know, because then I can make sure that, uh, notice quorum, and know official business is done, so.
Oh, perfect, yeah, thank you, yeah. Um, so that's, that's the big one coming up, this is the seniors last week. So, uh, and just right now, the only testing going on is through the twenty-ninth, we're finishing up our year-end universal screening, so that's big in the academic world right now. Um, other than rushing towards the end of the school year here with lots of different learning experiences outside of the building, and a lot of things wrapping up, that is kinda where we are at, so, what questions can I help you with?
What grades do our virtual?
K through twelve, we have the opportunity to have, it's just middle and high school right now.
Okay.
We occasionally do get the lower.
Yeah.
But we are able to do K through twelve.
Okay.
And that's through Pearson. Good question. Any other questions or comments I can help with? Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to superintendent report.
Alright, I'll get there. So I'll just try to highlight some of the stuff, the first thing was, uh, the safety drill, that was on, on May seventh. Uh, we had a lot of outside agencies that were here to observe and to, uh, coordinate their efforts. I think it went really well, the students, uh, it was a good movement to the reunification site, and, and just figuring out wh- what operations will look like there, so. Uh, students and staff reacted well and got a good feedback, and then some lessons learned, um, things that we can continue to refine as we do this, so. So no concerns there. Um, principal interviews, we've, we've got, uh, another, um, another round tomorrow night, I'll see if we can, uh, figure out where we're going here, so. Uh, educator appreciation week, that was, um, god dang, was that, that was two weeks ago already, that's crazy. Anyway, it was, it was a good week, uh, the survivor series went well with the beads. Uh, it was pretty interesting seeing students getting involved with that, wanting their teachers to, you know, do the rock, paper, scissors, and you know, sharing things on and whatnot, so that was good, and then the, uh, the, um, student council breakfast on Thursday was, was great as well, so, well received there. Alright, uh, strategic planning process, uh, had some good participation, we had one hundred and sixty-two community responses, and, uh, forty-one staff responses, I, I talked to Kevin, one thing that we have to do is solidify our date for July, and we talked about it, but I don't think we gave a specific date, uh, that we are coming together, so. Uh, what I would ask is that you guys take a look at your calendars, and let's talk about that in June, since that's, what, two weeks away here, so, let's solidify that date.
Did we have a target response in mind, or is this considered a good response?
No, this, this is actually a really good, this is a really good response. He, he was hoping for at least fifty, uh, to give a, a good idea, because then, uh, more responses after that kind of refine, um, you know, some of the data.
Okay.
So, so he, he was pretty happy with, with a number of responses, so. Anywho. Alright, uh, and then, uh, the school force, um, trailhead, which is, uh, just down here at the end of Fifth Street and East Lake Avenue, projected to begin on June tenth, uh, looking at moving some of the stuff, um, the old playground equipment out of there, because it's in the way, uh, and then trying to liquidate some of those assets.
No, we haven't.
Uh, no, no, so, no. So, that's, that's the plan at this point in time. Uh, and then, graduation, um, I know Dave is trying out a new, uh, microphone on his camera to see if that will work for dreaming graduation, can't guarantee that it's gonna be a total success the first time around, or we're gonna give it a shot, so, anyway. So it just makes things available for those that cannot attend, so. Alright, and that is, that is all I have.
Alright. Alright, public comment? None, alright, moving on. Personnel recommendations?
So what we have is, uh, three, uh, higher recommendations, um, listed there, as well as the, uh, memos with the groups and whatnot, for your consideration, excuse me.
I'll make the motion to approve the new hire.
Second.
Okay, Brad and Jason, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes.
Okay.
Alright.
We did not have any donations that made the list here. Full acceptance.
Okay, junior varsity and middle school official pay.
I'll make the recommendation, approve the official pay increase for the J V and middle school officials.
I'll second it. Okay, Brad and John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Okay, Montessori teacher and assistant training.
I'll make the motion to approve the Montessori teacher and assistant training plan.
Second.
Okay, Brad and Jason, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Alright, and we have a hummingbird on the screen. Contract proposal for certified and staff support.
Didn't open up either.
Mine didn't either, it went into a little bubble.
Or download it. You have to do, it's a download.
So based off from the, uh, presentation, we have the committee of the whole, we just had, uh, a little bit of retweaks, uh, with those scheduling, but, uh, pretty much the same as we had previously. And, uh, what you saw there was based off from an old schedule that we had, uh, just over ten years ago.
Before actually, yeah.
Right, um, but based off from our, our current projections, this is what we're looking at as far as those years, uh, just retweaking that schedule.
It would be the bottom ones too, the bottom would be the ones that you would go.
And then, what we would do is get our staff members situated on this schedule, based on where they're, um, with their, with their scenario.
So we finally have a kind of a.
Graduating.
Best graduating stepping.
Right, wanted, wanted to take care of our support staff this year.
And this is independent of any o- other, like, overall percentage raise or anything, this is.
This is, this is adding the three percent in.
To them spacing people out.
So the, so the bottom, the bottom section is the one that we wanna be looking at, so that's adding the three percent, so that would be what the wages would be set at for this year.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Correct, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Right, right, yes.
I'll make the motion to approve the three percent increase for certified staff and pay scale for support staff.
Second.
Okay, Brad and Jason, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, motion passes. Okay, after-school detention.
I'll make the motion to approve the after-school detention proposal.
Second.
Okay, Brad and Jason, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, okay, motion passes. Free expulsion policy.
Alright, just bringing this back to you, uh, after long discussions with, uh, our legal counsel, they suggested that we stick with our current, uh, policy fifty-six-ten, um, but looking at our in, in-house practice, uh, was the thing that we definitely wanted to update, just to lay out. This is the procedures on, on how we want to, uh, conduct that practice, so.
Do we need, uh, is, so this isn't anything that we need to hold on?
I, I would still like to have your, your, uh, positions on the process, just because it's, it's creating a little more definitive, uh, nature of how we're conducting it.
The policy's not changing.
That's correct.
It's just a process, right, so. I'll make the motion that we approve the pro- clarified process.
I'll second that. Okay, Brad and John? Okay, Brad and John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Okay, virtual summer school options.
So taking a look at it, this one I think we might have to table just briefly because getting the responses back from DPI has been slow. I actually had someone respond back to me finally today and saying, well, from hearing this, I would say yes, but I need to double and triple check this. So I don't have a definitive answer. I was hoping I would.
Always clear.
Okay, so.
Is, but aren't we going to be in summer school by the next school or?
I would say that we have a shot of making a decision on our committee of the whole, because that's on the fifth.
Okay.
Third, third, sorry, third. So we do have that potential, but that gives us a very short timeline to get students enrolled and whatnot. That's right. So I mean, we, we could make a decision that we're gonna cover stuff now, not knowing if, if we can count it or we can wait until the third and make an affirmative answer.
Have we gotten any kind of inclination, all like popular versus?
I think Jen had a couple that expressed some interest, but nothing definitive at this point.
What's the costs versus?
Right.
Well, what are we waiting on DPI? If we can cover by certain?
If, if we can include it in our summer school.
Oh, as?
Including the time, right. So, so how we can do that, because to me, that, that's making up some of the costs, right? But not, obviously, we're gonna have to front something here, so.
I honestly, you know, if it's just a couple of kids, I'd rather them get the education even if we don't get the credit, honestly.
Sure.
If they need it, I'm okay with it. If DPI lets us cover it and do whatever, but. You know, my, my daughter does virtual, but I don't think she's doing any summer school. She doesn't matter to me, so.
So, so it, it comes down to that question is, as far as that approval process. I would think that this is outside of the regular school year. I think we, we would operate this in, in an approval process where students apply, comes to, to the board here, make a decision and approve or not.
So we'd have to make a decision right in order to, for them to apply?
I think you can do multiple in an evening.
Okay.
But anyway, that's, that's just my take on it.
Yeah.
Until June third?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we table the virtual summer school decision until our committee of the whole meeting, then June third.
Second. Okay, Jason and John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. Cost share agreement.
So I'm, I'm bringing this back from a previous discussion and just getting language. After further consideration and, and thoughts on this, I think it's wise of us to, to do the cost share, but then making sure that we have a guarantee of that building use for two years. If not, then we get reimbursed that, simply because we're, we're talking about ADA compliance and safety for students and staff at the, at the Eagles, Eagles Nest Academy.
What do you think is the alternative? We don't? Are, are we gonna not have the funding?
I, I think we're gonna run into some issues when it comes to compliance and, and I know it's been brought to our attention by inspectors as well. And I know that Soul and Springs Forward, they're trying to get things covered, but it's rather challenging for them, so. And I, and I look at it, it is a safety concern that I have for both staff and students.
So you're thinking if we don't, they're not gonna be able to fund it to, to bring the building into compliance?
Right, in a timely fashion here, so.
Which then we run the rest of that and getting certified and the daycare.
There could.
Daycare certification.
Right.
Things.
Things have been going okay at this point in time, but I, I don't want to take our chances too long here. That's just, this is my thoughts on this. I know that Leah and I have chatted about this and seeing if there's additional ester funds to help cover this. I know they're going away, so we, but anyway, just to figure out if we can do this.
Are we covering fifty, fifty percent of an amount we don't know yet?
So what, what I had received for materials, it was like thirty-eight hundred was materials alone for this project.
And they're trying to.
Get volunteer.
Do volunteer labor, like, and I don't mean like someone.
They're trying to get actual contractors to volunteer. Yeah, they've, they've got a contractor that they're working with on this. And just looking at the footings as well as other pieces. I know that I'm trying to set it up, so I will be there as well, volunteer my time as, but we just, in, in my mind, it's something that needs to be dealt with sooner than later, so.
We did build some building remodeling or maintenance funds into the daycare budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. So there are some dollars sitting there that we can use to, towards that debt we did already.
My only concern is, okay, we do it this time and then the next project comes up for the next need and.
Right. That's, no, I, I'm, I'm concerned about that as well. And that's where I was kind of waffling on this, that this could make or break things right now. And I think that's where we have to be very deliberate and project as far as some of those maintenance concerns and kind of help that process along, so to speak. That's just my recommendations.
I make a motion that we approve the cost share agreement as presented.
Second. All those, Brad and Jason, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Okay, CS, CS district twelve service contracts.
Okay. I, I know that I had this at the committee of the whole meeting and I received the okay from, from, from the board to just move forward with whatever we came up with, but we, we need to actually have you formally accept and approve this schedule. It is slightly higher than last year, but I'm, my intent is to hopefully bring that down next year because there's some additional stuff that we need to bring on to get us over the hump with some of our professional development and, and leadership when it comes to standards work and whatnot, so.
Did you, is this list here where you already cut out some of the items?
That is correct.
What we have, what you have here now is, you feel are essential items. And I think last year we were at twenty.
Twenty, I think.
Eight, something, yeah. So there, there's, there's increases to each item and they were able to, I don't know how Frank was able to finagle the, the reading stuff, but anyway, they, they made some exceptions last year, but they're not making any exceptions to some of the services. It's all either an all or nothing, but, so.
So do you think this thirty-nine is the benchmark for future?
Like, like you said, I'm hoping to redo some of that.
Okay.
After this coming year, so. Cause there, there's some work that we need to do to get, get started on our standards work as well as some of our educator effectiveness and getting things back on, on track here, so.
So Brad, you probably should make this motion since you're a big CS twelve supporter. I retract.
I'll make the motion. Do we accept the contractors?
Second.
Okay, Brad and Jason.
So much enthusiasm.
I know. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, or am I? All opposed, motion passes. Alright, that brings us to a closed session. Pursuit of Wisconsin State Statute nineteen one eighty-five. With consideration of employment promotion compensation and performance evaluation date of any public employee or which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, could I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
And John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, we are now in closed session. And the time is.
Impressive.
Nine, six thirty-nine.
Yeah, not nine, six.
Six.
Second.
John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes, we are now in open session.
I'll make the motion that we pass the mentioned stipends and salary and insurance changes for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year.
Second.
Okay, Brad and Jason, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes, we have a motion for adjournment.
I make the motion to adjourn at seven oh two PM.
Second. Okay, Brad and Jason, all in favor? Brad, John, all in favor? Oppose, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening. Voila.